Good afternoon, everyone. This is Lilox, the Chair of the Ames Board of Trustees. It is 1:30 and it is time for a regularly scheduled board meeting on May 13th, 2020. Excuse me. With that, welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if I could, Carrie, please have a roll call attendance.
Chair Oxiger, roll call trustee Hou. Trustee Mark Hou. Trustee Gina O'Hara.
Here.
Trustee Ray Peterson. Dr. Peterson. Trustee Heidi Windell.
I'm here, present.
Thank you. And Chair Oxiger.
I'm present. Do you show Dr. Peterson on the, on the call? Let me check. Or trustee Hou, either one.
Is there another individual by the name of Raymond who is not Ray Peterson?
Chair Oxiger, I do not see Mark Hou, nor is trustee Ray Peterson responding.
Okay, well, we have a quorum. So I think we need to proceed with the meeting. Do they need to check in on this virtual platform? Do they need to check in before they can join us, or can they just join?
They may just join.
Okay, all right. Well, let's proceed then. First on the agenda is, or the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
I so move.
And I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. We'll take a roll call vote.
See Hou, are you in attendance? Trustee O'Hara.
Yes.
Trustee Peterson. Trustee Windell.
Yes.
Chair Oxiger.
Yes. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Do you have any questions or corrections on the minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the April 8th board meeting.
I second that motion, please.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. So let's go ahead and dig a roll call vote.
Trustee Hou. Trustee Hou, do you have your, do you want to unmute your machine? I see you.
Hello?
There you go. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Hou. We are approving the minutes and doing a roll call vote.
I read those. They're fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Hara. Trustee Peterson, have you joined us yet?
Not yet.
Oh, okay. You are there. I can hear you.
I'm here.
We are doing a roll call vote on approval of the minutes.
Okay.
April 8th meeting.
Right. I've been listening for a while and watching you, but I couldn't, I couldn't speak, so of course I vote aye.
Yes, thank you. Trustee Windell.
Yes.
Chair Oxiger.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Moving on to the continuing employment of non-probationary faculty for 2020-21, and item C, renewal of probationary faculty and non-tenured, non-due process faculty for 2020, 2020 to 21. Do I have a motion to approve those two items that we discussed the last meeting? Do we have?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would vote, I would move that we approve these two items.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Okay. Carrie, could we take a roll call vote on those two items?
Trustee Hou.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Windell.
Aye.
Chair Oxiger.
Aye, and those two items pass. Moving on to public comment, we don't have any public comment on the vert, on the virtual platform. Certainly, we welcome any comments from our audience. There is an email address provided. If you have any questions or comments, please use that email. They, they are monitored regularly and any emails will be passed on, or comments will be passed on to the board. Thank you for that. Presentations from guests and representatives to the board. We have no verbal presentations again today due to the verbal plat, or the virtual platform, excuse me. Please read the comments that are in your packet from Student Government Association, Ames Faculty Association, and Ames Staff Association. Those are provided for you. At this point, however, I would like to exercise chair's prerogative to mention, to make some comments. Chris Warren is, will no longer be with us. As I think you all saw the other day, he not only graduated, but he emceed the graduation. And I just want to say what a fabulous job Chris has done and what a great asset, not only to the student government body, but to Ames Community College. Chris has, he's done it all, and he's done it all in an exemplary fashion. We're so proud of Chris and we're so proud that he will be representing Ames wherever he goes. And certainly his legacy will follow him. And I want to say a personal thank you to Chris, and I'm sure that the rest of the trustees would echo that in saying thank you for an exemplary job and saying how proud, very proud that we are of the job you, Chris has done. And Chris, if you're out there, if you'd like to say anything, we'd certainly welcome it.
Yeah, definitely. This is, yeah, my last board of trustee meeting. Am I okay to turn on my video so I can actually see you all?
Sure you are.
Hi there.
There you are, yellow shirt and everything.
Yeah, I know. You guys actually see me without a tie on for once. But yeah, just thank you for the, the opportunity to present to you all over this past year. It really has been phenomenal working with all of you. And so I know I'm going to miss each and every one of you, but thank you to the board and to Carrie and to Dr. B. You all are so always just focused on the students and engaged to making sure that our students are successful. And it's been such a blessing to work with all of you over this past year. And actually too, I know normally I get a chance to kind of introduce the, the next group of people that are coming up after us. But can I take a quick moment to introduce the new student government president for next year?
You absolutely may.
Awesome. So I think Alicia Wilkinson is with us today, and she'll turn on her camera briefly so you can put a name to a face. But she is my successor, and she starts at the end of this month, and so she will be the person presenting to you for the next year. So Alicia, if you wanted to say a quick hi, you definitely can.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon. It's afternoon for me. I guess I will be the new president, so I'm super excited for this next year with all of the new things that are coming to Ames as well. So I'm really excited and nervous. I do have big shoes to fill, for sure. So I am super excited to work with all of you.
Well, we certainly welcome you, Alicia.
Thank you.
Well, that's that. I definitely will miss you all. So thanks again.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks for everything you've done, and best of luck to you in the future and all your endeavors.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on down the agenda to action items. First of all, action item A, fiscal year 2020 to 21 faculty consultation agreement. Mr. Jensen, I think you're on the podium.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have before you agenda item 6A, which is our faculty consultation agreement. Gina Jones, the co-chair, faculty co-chair is also joining in on this conversation. I'll give a quick preview and then ask Gina for a couple of comments and then turn it back to the board for questions. Each year, of course, we are required to, in accordance with our policy, to, to consult with our faculty, the AFA, to address matters related to specific conditions of employment. And again, included in this year's agreements are the salary increases that were presented by Dee Schultz and approved by the board at the last board meeting. And so there's no, no difference there between what was presented there and what was, what was consulted with the faculty. We discuss contract days as we do each year. And then we always highlight for the board some of the areas that the faculty and administrative consultation team has worked on over the course of the year, other than the employment issues. And this year, we spent a fair amount of time working through the faculty observation and evaluation guidelines that provided better guidance and a more concise evaluation tool for the faculty with their deans and chairs. And then we also highlight to the board that next year, work that the consultation team will be doing is reviewing our consultation policy and procedures in their entirety. And as part of the policy and procedure reformation process at the college, faculty consultations going through that next year with our policies and procedures. So at this meeting next year, I will, we will be bringing in an actual policy to the board for approval. But it's just, at this point, it's just a highlight that that's what we're going to be working on next year. This agreement has been ratified by AFA, and I'll turn it over to Gina for her comments that she'd like to make. Maybe Gina wasn't able to, I know she, she was intending to be at the meeting today. I also knew that she was traveling, so she may not have been able to connect in to the meeting. So with that, questions from the board, the administrative recommendation, of course, is approval of this faculty consultation agreement, the 2020-21 consultation agreement. And I'll turn it to, to you, Mr. Chairman, for any questions that the board may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Any questions on this board? Hearing no questions, entertain a motion to approve action item A.
I would make a motion to approve action item A.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Carrie, if, if you do a roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Trustee Hou.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson. Trustee Peterson. We'll go on to trustee Windell. And Chair Oxiger.
Aye. Well, motion passes. We might note in the minutes that trustee Peterson was unable to vote. We assume for technical difficulties. Okay, so that motion passes. Onto action item B, fiscal year 2020 to 21 budget approval. Mr. Jensen, you're up again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have agenda item 6B before you. This is the final approval of the fiscal year 21, 2021 budget. This is a continuation of the conversation we started at the last board meeting through the work session. And then this is the process where the 30 days have gone by since we presented the first reading of the budget to the second reading of the budget here. So this will be the final approval for the next year's budget. As, as we discussed at length at the last meeting, I mean, we, we are going into the next fiscal year with a, with a solid budget in place. As we all know, the issues that affect other campuses affect us in a different timeframe, primarily because we are funded differently than the other colleges and universities in the state. So as we head into fiscal year 21, as I presented last time, we, we have a stable budget going into fiscal year 21. We are beginning fiscal year 21 with a very strong fund balance, as I presented at the work session. And again, we are, we are in a position to, to weather a storm as, as the economic issues unfold over the next weeks and months. And so as I discussed at the work session, the fiscal year 21 budget is a stay-steady concept. We've, we are in a financial position where we can maintain our operations and have the timeframe in front of us as needed as the economics of the issues surrounding both COVID and the oil and gas industry in the world present themselves. And so at this point, I, I present the budget of $168,411,000 for approval by the board. And with that, I will stop my comments and open up for questions from the board.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Any questions or comments from the board?
I've had all mine answered from Chuck earlier, so we're, I'm fine.
I'm fine. My questions have been answered.
Thank you.
Some of mine as well.
Thank you, Mark. And I don't know whether trustee Peterson is back with us at this point or not. I would just like to thank you, Mr. Jensen, for all the work you've done on this and, and for your presentations. I feel very comfortable in your projections, secondary to your presentations. I think it's worthy to note that, and echo your sentiments on the unique position we're in with our budget. And even though we are, we may be affected to a degree by the current situation and the economy, I think we certainly have the wherewithal to weather that storm. I think, in my opinion, we're, and, and not just my opinion, and what I've heard from you in our conversations, we did, we, we have the, the wherewithal to stand in a storm because we don't have some of the expenses on the other side that so many learning institutions have, such as dorms and big kitchens and all that other stuff, all that infrastructure to run, which is, becomes a huge liability if you don't have students there. So at least that's my impression of it. So I'm very, very confident in approving this budget and seeing this move forward. So any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please, on item B, fiscal 2020 to 21 budget approval.
Trustee Hou.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Chair Oxiger, with your permission, I have trustee Peterson on my cellphone. He's going to yell through my cellphone. And you'll be able to hear.
Okay, so trustee Peterson is a yeah by proxy. Hey, go ahead, Carrie.
Thank you. Trustee Windell.
Yes.
Chair Oxiger.
That'd be a yes.
Thank you.
Moving on, item C.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for 6B.
Oh, yes, you're welcome.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Chairman, members, yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have before you agenda item 6C.
Okay.
This is the accompanying, accompanying appropriation approval, which ties into the, into the overall budget that you just approved. This is per Colorado statute that requires the board of trustees to, to set this appropriation and approve this appropriation each year. So it's a, it's a companion, it's a companion action item to the budget you just approved. And so again, it's for the same $168,411,000. And administrative recommendation is approval by the board for the appropriation item for fiscal year 2021. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, I'd like to move that we accept agenda item, is it 6C? Per Mr. Jensen's recommendation.
Thank you, trustee Windell. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Hou has seconded it. Any further discussion?
Briefly, Chuck and I have talked about where we're at in the future. I feel very strongly that not only he, but the entire college will keep their finger on the pulse on our finances and make adjustments as needed if they have to happen. But I think this is a move, move forward and with eyes wide open and none shut.
All right. Thank you, trustee Hou. Any other comments? Hearing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Phone up to this.
Trustee Hou.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Oh, he says aye. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Trustee Windell.
Aye.
Chair Oxiger.
Aye, the motion passes. Okay, moving on to item D, tax increment revenue sharing agreement with the Fort Lepton Urban Renewal Authority. Mr. Jensen, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have before you agenda item 6D. It's the recommended approval by the board of a tax increment sharing revenue agreement with the city of Fort Lepton Urban Renewal Authority. Just a couple minutes of background on this. This, this urban renewal authority was created in 2015 by the city of Fort Lepton. And as they've progressed with their plan and looking at the improvements that they're making to the property identified, they've come to the conclusion that the, the revenue streams that were being, that will be brought in by the additional property values are sufficient to cover their infrastructure issues that they needed to invest to, to revitalize the said property. And so they're at a position now where they want to offer 50% of the increased revenue to the tax and authorities that share this, these, this property within that district. So this is a positive thing for the college. It's a, it's a revenue positive thing. My estimate for the fiscal impact for the college is that it will bring in an additional $5,000 to $7,000 a year in property tax revenues to the college based on the improvements that are made to the property within this urban renewal district. And so it's my, it's the administrative recommendation to the board that this agreement be signed with the Fort Lepton Urban Renewal Authority. Mr. Chairman, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Are there any questions from the board on this?
I had a, I, I had a question.
Yes, please.
Um, Mr. Mr. Jensen, I wanted to ask, is there a chance that the property taxes would increase significantly, or maybe not significantly, but would increase every year based on the property's change of authority? As far as if it goes from ag to industrial or commercial, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. As that, as, as, as continued improvements are made to the property, we'll continue to benefit from that increased valuation.
Okay, what an opportunity. This is wonderful. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, trustee Windell. Mr. Jensen, I, I had a question. I was under the impression on this Urban Renewal Authority that when we received the revenue that there were no restrictions on the way we could spend it, and I may have been misinformed. Could you clarify that for me? Are there restrictions on how that money is spent?
It's, let me.
It seems to me like in reading through it late yesterday, again, that I saw a paragraph where it may be limiting that expenditure of that monies.
And, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've, I've had that same question too, in, in my research. It's, it's very broad that it, it's the, that the college is able to use these revenues to provide services necessary to serve the area. So I, I take that as a very general guidance that it becomes part of our, our funding that supports the Fort Lepton campus. And so in that regards, I feel very, very secure that that meets the intent of what we're to use as funding for is that, of course, we can prove that the amount of money that we're spending in that locale for support of operations in the, in the area far, far exceed the revenue that we're generating from this, from this revenue sharing.
Okay, well, that, that helps me. I appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to approve the tax increment revenue sharing agreement with the Fort Lepton URA.
I would move for approval of agenda item 6D.
Thank you, trustee O'Hara.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. Would, could we take a roll call vote on this, please? Thank you, trustee Windell, for that.
Trustee.
Okay, I can do that. You know, I look at my phone and it's, it looks like I'm doing okay.
You are now, sir.
Okay.
Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Trustee Hou.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Windell.
Aye.
It must be coming through now.
Yes. Thank you, trustee Peterson. So the vote for the tax increment revenue for Chair Oxiger.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item E, the board of trustee procedure 74-01, shared governance. Dr. Bornstein.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Can you all hear me?
I can.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You were.
You will recall, we reviewed the shared governance procedure that has been well, worked on really for over about a year and a half. You heard from Allison Easley from A F A, you've heard from Jen Seedorf from A S A, and you heard from Chris Warren from S G A and myself. And we had mentioned that we wanted to bring this back for action this month. Those esteemed colleagues I just mentioned are all on the Zoom meeting. So if we, if you have any further questions that we can address, we're all here to address them. And we are recommending to to the board that you move to approve procedure 74 dash 01, shared governance as presented. You will note also in the attached document, there was one edit that you had suggested under three C was to reword that language. And instead of saying all presidents must be in attendance, then we are now saying meetings, meetings will be scheduled when all presidents are able to attend. That was the recommended language from last month. That's the only change. And we now hand it over to Chair Oxiger for a vote.
Thank you, Dr. Bornstein. Are there any questions of Dr. Bornstein relative to this issue or to this action item?
No.
Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Board of Trustees procedure 74 dash 01, shared governance.
Mr. Chairman.
Please go ahead, Dr. Peterson.
All right, thank you. I would move that we approve item six. E.
Item six E, that's correct. Okay, thank you, Dr. Peterson. Do you have a second?
I second that motion.
I think I heard Dr. O'Hara sneak in there. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee How.
Hi.
Trustee O'Hara.
Hi.
Trustee Peterson.
Hi.
Trustee Windell.
Hi.
Chair Oxiger.
Hi. Okay, motion carries. I'm sorry, Dr. Peterson, did you have something?
Okay, okay, thank you, okay.
Okay, moving on, action item F, emeritus status request for Janine Lewis. Dr. Rotharmer, please.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein. It's my honor to present to you for your consideration three faculty members for emeritus status. And I would like to start with action item six F. Janine Lewis has taught developmental and college level mathematics at Ames for more than 30 years. Along with providing outstanding instruction, Ms. Lewis retired as the department chair of mathematics. She held multiple offices for the Colorado Association of Developmental Education, and she served four years on the executive board of the National Association of Developmental Education. So at this time, I'd like to recommend approval for emeritus status for Janine Lewis.
Thank you, Dr. Rotharmer. Any questions of Dr. Rotharmer? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve emeritus status request for Janine Lewis.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would so move that we approve meritus, er, meritus status for this individual, Janie Lewis.
Thank you, Dr. Peterson. Do you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. Thank you, trustee Windell. All in favor, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee How.
Hi.
Trustee O'Hara.
Hi.
Trustee Peterson.
Hi.
Trustee Windell.
Hi.
Chair Oxiger.
Hi. Motion carries. Congratulations on that, Ms. Janine Lewis. Gosh, this is, I wish we could somehow see these folks and congratulate them, but our congratulations are no less sincere. Action item G, emeritus status request for Ron Lewis, Dr. Rotharmer.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger. In his 28 years of teaching developmental mathematics at Ames Community College, Ron Lewis developed a reputation as a passionate educator who has put students first and who always made time to collaborate with colleagues. His patience with students, love of math, and the ability to help students engage with the material enabled Mr. Lewis to help countless students establish their core math skills. I'm as based on his service and record that I'm recommending approval for emeritus status for Ron Lewis.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve emeritus status for Mr. Ron Lewis.
Mr. Chairman, it's Heidi Windell. I'd like to make a motion to approve the item, agenda item, what is it, six G?
Six.
For the emeritus status, uh huh, for Mr. Ron Lewis.
Thank you, trustee Windell. Do we have a second?
I would second, Mark.
Thank you, trustee How. We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call vote for approval of this request.
Trustee How.
Hi.
Trustee O'Hara.
Hi.
Trustee Peterson.
Hi.
Trustee Windell.
Hi.
Chair Oxiger.
Hi. Congratulations to Mr. Ron Lewis. Next item is item six H, emeritus status request for Wendy Smith. Dr. Rotharmer, you're on a roll, sir.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger. Wendy Smith has been a professor of psychology at Ames Community College since 2001. She was the program director for the Ames Biofeedback Program from 2001 through 2004 and managed the operation and marketing for this highly successful enterprise. Ms. Smith has also been a fixture, excuse me, fixture with the iFocus Workshop Program, helping numerous students learn how to reduce test anxiety. I would like to ask for your recommend Wendy Smith for emeritus status.
Thank you to Dr. Rotharmer. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve emeritus status request for Wendy Smith.
I would move approval for agenda item six H, the emeritus status request for Wendy Smith.
All right, thank you, Dr. O'Hara. We have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee How. We have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Carrie?
Trustee How.
Hi.
Trustee O'Hara.
Hi.
Trustee.
Hi.
Trustee Windell.
Hi.
Chair Oxiger.
Hi, congratulations, Wendy. Okay, moving on the agenda, information items. First on the information items is the June 17th and 18th, 2020 board retreat update. I've talked with Dr. Bornstein and I've talked with Pam with A C C T. And it looks like the first day, June 17th, is going to be a half a day. And it'll probably be located on campus. Some of these, because of the COVID virus, are still kind of up in the air as to where they will be, but they'll certainly be announced in plenty of time so everyone gets proper notice. It'll be a half a day and there'll be a staff presentation. And the second day will be a full day. We're looking right now at the really country club at our regular meeting room out there. Looks like the first day is going to be primarily regarding the formal evaluation of and by the board. And the second day or the second half of the day will be spent discussing meeting protocols and agendas and and items pertinent to the board. So that's pretty much it. Dr. Bornstein, I think you're on the line. Do you have any further comments on the retreat? Anything that I would miss?
No, I believe you covered everything. The 17th will be the board retreat with the cabinet, the administrative retreat where cabinet will present year-end information to the strategic plan initiatives that their divisions have been engaged in. So that's what the half day on the 17th is focused on.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Anything else? Okay, that's the board retreat. Item B correspondence, we won't go into correspondence. There is some correspondence, however, in in your packet. Please review that. The same with other events. Please reference your your board packet for items coming up on on the calendar. Next on the agenda is the president's report again. We we typically will not do a verbal presentation. I think, however, that Doc or that Dee Schultz is with us and because of the current situation, I think she is planning on doing a short presentation for us. Am I correct?
U R D is going to review some data that HR has pulled together with regard to our employees as well as there's some information following with regard to contributions that Ames Community College has made to our communities, to our students and to our employees through this time. So that's in your packet for reference. And then finally, the employee guidelines with regard to our reentry plan phase one that have gone out, that's an eight-page document that's in your packet as well, again, for your reference. So I think he is ready to walk through these graphs with you.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Dee.
Good afternoon. I want to thank Jeff Adcock for assisting me with these data points. He was very helpful in providing this information for us based on the information we provided to him. We started tracking situations that we had with our employees and students when we were, became notified that we were having employees become ill or potentially had some exposure. Also, back in March, started tracking employees that had traveled to high-risk areas. So this first slide gives you a picture of some of those numbers that we were tracking, starting in March, and then how they increased for the following month. And so in, as of March 31st, we had 77 employees and students that that we were notified of that had either had tested positive or had some were symptomatic or had been potentially exposed to COVID. It grew slightly into April, up to 84 employees. And at that time, we had 865 employee, an employee population base. We also, by the mid or April 21st, we had 28 employees who were symptomatic. And at that time, 24 of those 28 had recovered from their symptoms. And so I just wanted to provide this, just to give you an idea of the numbers that we were dealing with early on. And then on the next slide, we were able to get some projections about what would, what could have happened if if Ames had done nothing as on March 17th, which was the date that we had decided to move to a remote environment here at Ames. And if we had done nothing, this first graph shows that based, so we had this one day of entry and we selected March 17th was the date we went remote. And at that time, on March 17th, we had two employees that had tested positive and we had 21 symptomatic employees. If we had done nothing by between the dates of March 27th and April 1st, we would have exceeded our employee population of becoming either symptomatic or potentially positive. So you'll see that that crossbar on that that shows that we would have reached that point between between that timeframe. The other impact that that we were able to show based on on those day one numbers is that if if we had done absolutely nothing and we were kind of in a bubble, we had no other outside influences, we would have potentially impacted our community by, let me double check the date here, by March, April 10th, we could have potentially impacted our community up to 235,000 employees who could have potentially been symptomatic and just under 30,000 that could have been tested positive. So I just wanted to show you that that, you know, the decision that was made by the college to react quickly and respond to the situation was the right thing to do and could have really been a different scenario for our Ames population and our community as a whole. Well, and so I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions of Dee?
Dee, this is Heidi Windell. I don't have any questions. I just want to say you've all done a wonderful job. And I am so happy that you did take these precautions early. It looks like it really changed a lot of people's lives or the potential case of having a catastrophe, really. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'd certainly like to echo those sentiments of trustee Windell. You know, that what would have happened had we not done nothing remains an unknown. I know this is done on a, on a model, a, a reliable model. And it would have been absolutely catastrophic to have seen anything like that happen. So to have done the responsible thing and the correct thing as we did is just incredible. The potential savings and illnesses and suffering and and us, quite frankly, that could have occurred from from this had we done nothing. So kudos, absolutely wonderful thanks to everybody. Not only with what you did, but how quickly you did it. I think the rapid response and the way you put things together and still manage somehow to continue educating our students was just absolutely amazing. So we can't say enough thank yous to all of you for what you did and how you did it. So please accept our sincere appreciation. Any other comments? Hearing none, thank you, Dee. Appreciate it very, very much. Hearing none, thank you, Dee. Appreciate it very, very much. And I assume, should we have any questions, that you would be the person that we can contact? Is that an accurate statement?
You would contact your president and we pass information.
Pass information on, and I'm sorry, and I mean, we'll go through normal channels, of course.
The, the other statement I would just make is there's a lot of information, obviously, in the additional documents with regard to the contributions from March 15th to May 11th that the college has made in a variety of in-kind ways and direct ways, as well as that, those employee guidelines. So if there are any questions that you have, please, please do not hesitate to contact me. And that eight-page reentry guideline for our employees and also for our students includes, as you can see there on the screen, specific information about social distancing, returning to work, arrival on campus, which is our check-in stations. What does it mean to be symptomatic, masking, meetings, common areas travel. So there's, there's lots and lots that the college has been working on diligently with information constantly provided from the CDC, from the executive orders from the state, as well as guidance from the state, from our county, regional, and local cities guidance, as well as our own policies and procedures. So again, please don't hesitate to ask if you have questions about any of this, because there's a lot of detail there. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you. And Dr. B, can you talk a little bit about the response we had or how well it worked or setting up the testing at Ames? I think the state came in and we assisted in that testing. Is that correct?
I can, yeah, sure, I can say a moment. Actually, UC Health CEO Marilyn Shocker approached, approached me with the idea of the drive-through testing center at, you know, at the Greeley Campus to provide that resource in that location. Then certainly John Foltz, who's Executive Director of Safety and Security, and Mike Millsaps, Executive Director of Facilities and Operations, worked directly with UC Health to determine whether or not that would be feasible and what location would be feasible. And then pulled in Brad Yoder, our Chief Technology Officer, because that would also be needed. And then also pulled in our marketing communication team to make sure that the communication was supported from our side, even though that was, the lead was taken certainly from UC Health. So all those folks worked together to make that happen. Did speak with Marilyn this week and it seems to be going very well. UC Health is very pleased. Folks are being served, served quickly. The environment is safe. Everyone's following health protocols. And they, they couldn't be happier with our, our partnership.
Wonderful. Yeah, I appreciate that report. I just, I just thought it was awesome that we had the ability to offer assistance to UC Health in getting that done. So, okay. Anything else on the President's Report? Everything else should be in your packet. Hearing none, then, comments from board members. This is our time to just comment on the meeting or things in general. Or, and I like to include the next one in this. It makes it flow nicely. The comments from board members include the assessment of the board meeting, et cetera. What worked, what didn't work.
Mr. Chairman, this is, um, Trustee Wendell. I, I'm just so amazed how efficient and effective everyone at Ames has been with this COVID response. I'm very pleased Dee more or less has showed, you know, the response and, and what could have occurred and how quickly everyone came up to the task. And I know there was a lot behind the scenes that had to occur for everyone to continue learning, to continue teaching, continue through the graduation, et cetera. And I'm looking at the, what did we learn? You know, the strategies, the challenges. I think everything, there was tons of challenges, lots of strategy. I mean, everyone just did an amazing job. So I just, you know, my hats are off to everyone there at Ames. I'm very impressed and I'm very happy to be a trustee for this board. It's a great college, a great institution. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Wendell. Anybody else?
Again, I want to thank the college. I mean, you know, this is, you know, they have 864 families. We all have our own little household environment to, to maintain and control and set up the best practices is, is, is a challenge for anyone. And I, and I appreciate what Dr. B has done and Cabinet, as well as the staff in general. They, they've stepped up to the, like, then some. And, you know, frustratingly, it's going to have to continue for a while. And, you know, I'm sure they got their finger on the pulse as we need to figure out how to manage classrooms once again and not done with this, this issue. It's going to be around us for a little while longer. And I just, I, I trust their judgment to be beneficial to all concerned. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Howe. Anyone else? Okay, well, I'm not hearing anyone else. So I want to echo some of the comments that have been made by Trustees Wendell and Howe about how efficiently and effectively Ames has handled this COVID response. It's just been absolutely amazing. Again, like I said before, with the, with how quickly it happened and how well it happened. I don't think anybody but Ames staff could have pulled it off, quite frankly. Also want to say what a fabulous commencement exercise we had. It certainly wasn't in person. It was certainly different, but I don't think, again, that anybody else could have pulled it off any better than what all of our people did. It was, it was very impressive. All the students were recognized. We, we had speakers that just did a wonderful job. Chris Warren did an incredible job of emceeing it. Dr. Bornstein did a super job. She was very, very sincere in her presentation and conveying for all of us how we feel about our students and our college and, and the education that all of our students received. So, and certainly to the team that put that all together, the filming of it and the presentation of it. The way they made that flow in a, in a presentation was just incredible. So, and another event was the groundbreaking, the way they put that together. Even with the wind blowing like it was, they did an incredible job of getting that out and, and getting it, it a super presentation done. So congratulations to everyone on the job they did. Certainly, and I would be really remiss if I didn't mention it, congratulations to all the award recipients that we know went on during Celebration Week, many, many awards. I, quite frankly, I'll be very honest with you. I thought about mentioning some of them. I know I would have missed someone. So I just want to say equally, thank you very, very much for all of the work you did and for your, the, the work you did in earning those rewards and getting recognized in those rewards. So congratulations to everyone. Are there any other comments from the board? This is your time. Well, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a second. Let's have one more roll call, roll call vote, just for fun.
Okay, Trustee Howe.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara. Trustee O'Hara. We'll move on to Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Wendell.
Aye.
Chair Oxegar.
Aye. Please, everyone be safe, take care, stay well. We stand adjourned.